March 7th City Council meeting with all of our city council and staff together again. This is great. The first item on the agenda this evening is I'd like to do a moment of silence. So I'd like to read some comments out and have a share a moment of silence. This week marks two years since Issaquah's emergency proclamation related to the pandemic, and in that time, we have lost community members to this deadly virus. In addition, this week, we have seen continued violence against Ukraine. We stand in solidarity with Ukraine, and we acknowledge the ongoing impacts of both the pandemic and war in Europe. Let us now have a moment of silence for all those who have been lost and for those who mourn them. Thank you all. We are back, and we are back in chambers, and we're going to be doing hybrid meetings going forward. Tonight is our second night back in the council chambers since March of 2020. It is wonderful to see you all in person again. We will also continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. All of us in this room will be captured by the fixed cameras and represented as one participant in the virtual meeting. Other remote participants and presentations will be featured on the TV screen and the council members' individual screens when they are addressing the council. City council members, if you wish to speak at any time during the meeting, simply raise your mic. We will resume voice votes unless a council member requests a roll call vote. And the next item on the agenda, and please join me, since you have not been able to join me for a long time, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda this evening is special business, ID 1039. This will be the introduction and swearing in of Issaquah Police Department new hires. And tonight, it is my pleasure to welcome and swear in two new corrections officers with the Issaquah Police Department, Julian Grace and Narjan Salman. I'm going to head over to the podium, and we're going to kick this off with interim police chief Paula Schwan, providing some introductions.
Having us, we'd like to do tonight is introduce our new staff. How many of you are corrections officers? Is Narjan on?
Not on.
There we go.
I'll start over again. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, for having us tonight. I'm here to introduce two of our newest members. Julian's actually been with us for a couple months, and Narjan, also just a little bit shorter time, but they're full on in their process and training. But we want to make sure that you guys had the opportunity to meet some of the staff here, and they are with us in the corrections department, so they're working down in our jail. They both come with a large amount of experience, both from King County at different times. And so I'm going to let them do a little bit of introduction of themselves. I'll start with Narjan. Narjan, if you could introduce yourself, where you came from, and maybe a little bit about your history, what you like about Issaquah, and why you joined us, and then maybe a fun fact.
Okay, sure. Hi, everybody. My name is Narjan Salman. I graduated Central Washington with criminal justice and psychology degree. After that, I worked as a correctional officer with King County Corrections. I worked there for about a year, and after that, I decided to join the Washington State Department of Health and Social Services as a case manager. And then from now on, I'm right now with the Issaquah Police Department as a corrections officer. I joined the Issaquah Police Department because I didn't like the department's how professional and respectful they are, and they're very involved with the community, and they just want to be out there and help people. And I just want to be such an honorable team. And I'm very grateful to be here today and meeting with all of you. The fun fact about me, I am afraid of cats, but I have a cat right now around me walking around the house. So that would be all about me.
Thank you, Narjan. And now we have Julian Grace, who also came from King County. Julian?
Hello. I'm Julian Grace. I was initially born in Washington, but I lived most of my life in New Orleans, Louisiana, where I graduated from LSU, at which point I moved back here and began my law enforcement career in King County and recently transferred here. I chose Issaquah because after spending so much time with King County, I felt I needed to grow more and expand more in my knowledge and experience in my chosen career. And after a lot of research and a lot of planning and digging, I found that the best opportunity was Issaquah. And my overall goal is to grow and learn and experience as much as I can and put that back out into my community. Fun fact about me, I don't have a cat, but I do have a dog. He's about a year old now. His name is Russet, like the potato. That is, that is me.
Thank you, Julian. Okay, and now, Madam Mayor, if you'll do the swearing in of Narjan first?
Will do. So Narjan, this is my first digital swearing in, so we'll have to see how it works. I'm going to read some lines and just have you repeat them after me. I state your name.
I, Narjan Salman.
Recognize this badge.
Recognize this badge.
As a symbol of public faith.
As a symbol of public faith.
And I accept it as a public trust to be held.
And I accept it as a public trust to be held.
So long as I am true to the ethics of this department.
As long as I am true to the ethic of this department.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray our badge.
I will never betray our badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
For the public trust.
For the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the Issaquah Police Department.
And the Issaquah Police Department.
Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, Julian. Just repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Julian Grace.
Recognize this badge.
Recognize this badge.
As a symbol of public faith.
As a symbol of public faith.
And I accept it as a public trust to be held.
And I accept it as a public trust to be held.
So long as I am true to the ethics of this department.
So long as I am true to the ethics of this department.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray our badge.
I will never betray our badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
For the public trust.
For the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the Issaquah Police Department.
And the Issaquah Police Department.
Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
And that's cool. This is going to get pinned out later.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there some certificates for me to sign from Kirk not this evening? Okay, thank you. I want to thank our interim chief for looking at the way we do some of our work and proposing some new things for being able to introduce our new hires to the community. So thank you very much, interim chief Schwan, and welcome both of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is audience comments, and members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who have signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first, and if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, you can press star three, and if you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device, and one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you are in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for others before closing this portion of the meeting. City clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
So for those making comments, please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. Remute your microphone when you're done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address us this evening. City clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, our first speaker is a virtual participant, Romer Morales. Romer, in just a moment, I'll make you a panelist. You should see the option to unmute and can also choose to turn your video on.
Hello, my name is Romer Morales. I live in Bellevue, technically, but I've been a student at Issaquah, the Issaquah School District, all my life. I've lived here my entire life, and today I want to discuss the issues regarding lighting at the Tibbetts Valley Skate Park. As many of you guys are aware, Tibbetts Valley Skate, or the Tibbetts Valley Park itself is almost entirely covered with lights. All of the fields are fully lit, except for one specific corner of the park, and that would be the skate park. And it's especially, especially a problem during the winter and right now, as it gets dark really early, which poses safety issues not only for the people skating there, but for anybody who uses the park during those hours. Skating is a really physically demanding sport, but also it requires a large amount of awareness of what's happening around you, and in the dark, it creates really intense safety issues for people skating. And I think that the park could do with some lighting, because as the rest of the park has lighting, and nobody uses the rest of the park during the night, it's, the skate park's the only part that's being used. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming tonight. City clerk, who else is up to speak?
The next speaker is another virtual participant, Nikhil Hunter. Nikhil, in just a moment here, I'll make you a panelist. You should see the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nikhil Hunter. I am a student at Issaquah as well. And my address, do we need to include our address?
Yes, you can.
My address is 951 Third Ave, Northeast Issaquah, Washington, so a local to the Issaquah Highlands. I was looking more into the Issaquah City Council website, and I noticed there seems to be no statistical analysis and direct numbers as to how, like pertaining to issues in our community. You know what I mean? Like, there, there seem to be no numbers and analysis on homelessness, on, there are a variety of issues, but like no direct numbers that the public can easily get and analyze themselves. And I guess that's what I wanted to ask the members of the city council. Will there be any numbers, or is there any way we could implement such a program?
That's a great question, Nikhil. During public comments, the council is taking in your information, but not necessarily responding this evening. Council president is sitting to my right, and so between her and I, we will make sure that we get back to you with some answers. Thank you for coming. Did you have anything else?
Thank you very much.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Oh, yeah, I, I seem to have missed the pretense, and I apologize for that, but thank you for having me.
Thanks, Nikhil. City clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, I see a few raised hands. Mark Clemens is next on the list. Just a moment here. Looks like Mark has lowered his virtual hand, so, oh, it's back. Okay. Mark, in just a moment, I'll make you a panelist. You'll see the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on. You have the floor, Mark.
Mark Clemens, 1515 Hillside Drive, Southeast. That's the Sycamore's neighborhood. Thank you, City Council and Madam Mayor. As previous stated, my name is Mark Clemens. I am the executive director of the Downtown Issaquah Association, and I'd like to share with you some of our spring programming, which is made possible by our commission grants. The mission of the Downtown Issaquah Association is to cultivate a thriving old town that builds community and celebrates our charm. We kick off the busy spring with a historic, historical preservation walking tour, March 24th. Our farm, farm fresh market at the Historic Shell Station kicks off on Saturdays, March 26th through April 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Our fresh flower market, also at the Historic Shell Station, kicks off on Sunday, that's Easter Sunday, April 17th, and Mother's Day, May 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We bring back the Downtown Issaquah Wine and Art Work on Friday, April 15th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. April 23rd is Keep Issaquah Beautiful Day. This is a citywide initiative, and the Downtown Issaquah Association participates in that from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And also, we're bringing back Fenders on Front Street. That returns Father's Day, June 19th. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. City clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak?
I see another virtual hand raised, Alicia Spinner. Alicia, in just a moment here, I'll move you up as a panelist. You should see the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on. Hold on just a moment, I'm having a little technical difficulty. Alicia, it doesn't look like I can give you video privileges, but I'll go ahead and unmute Alicia, thanks for your patience. It won't let you. Are you able to unmute her? All right, it appears we are unable to unmute or elevate Alicia to give her voice tonight, So Alicia, we'd encourage you to please email your comments to thecitycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. I apologize for the issues, technical issues, tonight. I'm monitoring to see if we have anyone else from the public who wishes to make comments tonight, so please raise your virtual hand or send the host a message. I'll just monitor this real quickly. All right, I don't see anyone else who's wishing to speak.
Thank you, city clerk. Alicia, if you are able to email tonight, I would be able to read your comments so that the council can hear. Sorry for the inconvenience. We had several speakers tonight during public comments talking about lighting for the skate park at Tibbetts Valley, an interest in additional data or statistics or analysis that can be presented on the city's website, and heard from the executive director, Dia, with a very exciting lineup of spring events. So thank you very much, all, for coming today. As a reminder, you can always submit your comments anytime to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And I'm going to turn it over now to council president Walsh to see if there were any email comments on tonight's topics that you might like to summarize.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have several comments, starting with the consent calendar for AB 8330, proposing a new senior planner position. There were concerns about it being outside of the budget session. That person also disagreed with AB 8342, the landscape services contract. On AB 8332, the Capital Finance Community Task Force Recommendations Report, we had one commenter who doesn't support the conclusions of the report, believing that the discussion was only focused on new funding sources rather than cutting existing services. Two commenters noted that we cannot build our way out of congestion, and two commenters disagreed with the park district concept, but for different reasons. One stated that we have more perks than residents need, and one believed that the funding model would degrade our perks. On AB 8309, the Human Services Strategic Plan, one commenter was against adoption, conveying a preference that the list of goals should be trimmed to our funding capabilities. And for AB 8345, the Rental Assistance Program Amendments, one commenter raised concerns about the funding for Imagine Housing and whether there's transparency to ensure the funds benefit residents directly, and one commenter preferred funding at 60% AMI rather than 80% AMI.
Thank you, council president. We're going to move on to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with council member Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick notes. LTAC has its first meeting on March 9th. We'll be kicking that off after having some initial meetings with each of the members individually to kind of get them orientated toward the business of LTAC. The CWA Finance and Management Committee will be meeting March 5th, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Joe. Council member De Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. On March 3rd, I attended the Healthier Here Governing Board meeting. We heard reports from three organizations who are funded by Healthier Here and participating in clinical practice transformation pilot programs. And then on Thursday of this week, there will be an Eastside Human Services Forum meeting, and on Friday, there will be an Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, council member De Michelle. Council member Hahn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two upcoming meetings to announce and one report. For the upcoming meetings, on March 17th, there will be a meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council of Wyra 8, which is the technical name for our watershed, and the agenda is not yet set. And then on March 16th, there will be a meeting of the King Conservation District Advisory Committee, and this will be a subcommittee that will review the member jurisdiction grant program. So the agenda is around setting up that committee, as it will be the first, first meeting of that subcommittee. And then I attended the March 2nd Regional Water Quality Committee meeting, and at this meeting, we took action to adopt our 2022 work plan for the Regional Water Quality Committee, and we also had a sewer rate briefing. This was from the King County Wastewater Treatment Division, and this, this particular informational, this presentation was informational, but we will also be anticipated to have additional meetings on this topic. This information was about how the rates were set, and the sewer rate is expected to be transmitted in April and then come back to the committee for review at the May meeting. I wanted to note that so far, the materials that have been presented indicate that it is expected to be an increase over the version that was voted on last year in 2021 by the Sound Cities Association pick. So this is something that I will be keeping track of, because it recently was considered by the, the Public Issues Committee for a Sound Cities Association, and therefore, it seems important to keep track of this new proposal. Major anticipated drivers of the rate increase are the West Point project costs, conveyance system improvements, and similar needs, and I will be tracking this and reporting back to the council with any more information as it comes forward. The next meeting will be April 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Hahn. Council member Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The King County Growth Management Planning, Planning Council met on March 2nd in a virtual format. The GMPC looked at the work plan for 2022, received a briefing on affordable housing, on the Affordable Housing Committee, including an introduction of the new Affordable Housing Committee members, including our very own Lindsay Walsh. And we received a briefing on the, on the urban growth area expansion policies and the four-to-one program. Also, on March 10th, the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors will meet in a virtual format at 4:00 p.m. The agenda includes a briefing from the fire chief, including an update on COVID-19, update on PFOS, and regular business will include a review of the CORE Connect Quarterly Report and the CORE Connect Funding Outlooks, and an update on our training consortium. And that concludes, concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, council member Ray. Council member Mertz, I'm going to ask if it's okay with you, Alicia is available by phone. Do you mind if we step back and let her do some public comment?
Certainly.
Great, thanks. City clerk?
Alicia, I believe you've joined us by phone, so I'm going to attempt unmuting you again.
Thank you.
All right, and we can hear you now.
Thank you so much. Okay, great. Thank you so much for your help. Hello, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to share with you tonight. I'm Alicia Spinner, coordinator of the Issaquah Cultural Circle, formerly known as the Latino Club of Issaquah. I'm working together with Marisol Bisser and other Issaquah neighbors. We have been helping for more than 10 years the Latino community of Issaquah, giving them a space to celebrate their culture with events of the Day of the Dead, and offering volunteer opportunities that make diverse families feel included and active members of our communities. Through the years, we have worked and collaborated with many other members of cultural groups, and thanks to that, we really understand the need for our organization that will represent not only the Latino community, but all the diverse population. These years, we were the recipients of a grassroots grant, and I'm here to tell you how much this has helped our organization. Thanks to this grant, we were able to offer very special events for many families and many seniors in our city, and became a nonprofit organization. We especially want to thank Monica Negrilla and Hannah Roberts from your Human Services Department for all their wonderful support, and we are growing the Issaquah Cultural Circle, or the Circle, as we want to call our organization. We're planning to not only help with events, but we want to formally connect youth and families to existing and new services to help them navigate the experience of living in Issaquah. Thank you for the opportunity to talk today.
Alicia, thank you for sharing all of that. We'll go back to committee and regional reports, and we'll start again with council member Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is council member Mertz. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board met on Thursday, March 3rd, from 10 till noon. We recommended certification of the Fredrickson Manufacturing and Industrial Center Complex Subarea Plan. We had a discussion on regional housing strategy update, where I conveyed and got some answers to some questions from the city, and there was a discussion on outreach and support for the 2024 comprehensive plan updates. The PSRC has a bunch of resources available to help cities as they are doing their plans. We are blessed to have a strong planning organization, but I did convey the concern that for small cities that don't have significant planning organizations, this can be a heavy lift. Then Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee is this Wednesday, February 9th, from 7:00 till 9:00 p.m., and there's going to be a discussion on the legislative session update with lots of information there, and a discussion on the American Rescue Plan, Rescue Plan Act, but there is not intent, there is no intention to have any action items coming out of that meeting. This concludes my report.
Thank you, council member Mertz. Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you very much, Mayor Polly. No report this evening.
Thank you. Council president. Council President Walsh?
Also, no report this evening.
Wow. The mayor does have a report. There will be no executive session this evening. Also wanted to do a few more words about Ukraine and about our solidarity with Ukraine. So, the City of Isaguac stands in solidarity with the people of Ukraine. We condemn Russian President Vladimir Putin's unprovoked and unjustified invasion of Ukraine. We join jurisdictions throughout the world in calling for an end to the violence, a return to peace in Europe, and the protection of Ukraine's sovereignty. We are proud to fly the Ukrainian flag at our Isaguac City Hall. This week, we mark the two-year anniversary of Isaguac's emergency declaration regarding the pandemic, and in this time, more than 6 million people globally have died from COVID-19. We acknowledge the heartbreaking toll this pandemic has taken, even as we hope for a brighter and healthier future. Today, I signed a proclamation making March 7th, 2022, COVID-19 Memorial Day. We recognize and honor those who have died as a result of this deadly virus. I am thankful for our community's resilience in combating this pandemic, and I look forward to brighter days ahead. The 2021 Community Awards are coming up. Isaguac will soon present its Honored Hall of Fame Award. Each year, the mayor and council president select a person to induct into the Isaguac Hall of Fame for their exemplary record of inspiration, leadership, and service. So, please join us as we honor the recipient at the Chamber of Commerce's annual Isaguac Community Awards Event on March 31st. It's a free event to attend, but registration is requested, and you can learn more about it on the Isaguac Chamber of Commerce website. And we have some upcoming events. There is an open house on Title 18 and the Natural Environment, and the city is hosting a virtual open house to answer the public's questions on the final natural environment discussion draft. The virtual house will be on March 8th at 4:00 PM and is free to attend. To register and receive a meeting link, please visit the city's website. And the state park is having Free Pass Day. Wednesday, March 9th, is a free day to attend Washington State Parks without a Discover Pass. March 9th is a designated free day in honor of Billy Frank Jr.'s birthday. And there is a Cascade Gardener Spring Series coming up on sustainable gardening. Cascade Water Alliance is sponsoring a free webinar on March 19th at 10:00 AM. Participants will learn cultivating techniques that are more sustainable for the environment and enjoyable for the gardener. Registration is required through brown paper tickets. And last but not least, City Hall is opening to the public. We will be extending our hours beginning Monday, March 14. City Hall will be open Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and it's anticipated that open hours will resume a Monday-through-Friday schedule beginning on April 11th. And that's pretty exciting news. The next item of business tonight is the consent calendar, and the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Can I get a motion?
I would like to move to approve the consent calendar as included in the packet.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as submitted. It says, Clerk, please call the roll. And that is actually not necessary tonight. I didn't think it was. And I missed that spot. Highlighted sections in here that are going to have to come out. So, it had asked if council members wanted to identify themselves to speak, they would raise their microphone. If we're taking a vote, they just, we're just doing a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. A little bit faster than a roll call vote. Okay, the next item of business is under regular business. This is AB 8332, Capital Finance Community Task Force Recommendation Report, and the action tonight is for the council to receive this report. So, you will receive a report from the task force. In 2019, nope. In 2021, I appointed the task force. I'm just checking on dates. Okay, 2021. I appointed the task force to provide a recommendation on the city's capital spending priorities. And I'd like to welcome members of that task force who are with us tonight and thank them for their thoughtful work over the past six years. So, we have also had the service of some of our council members on this task force as well, so I'd like to thank Councilmember Mertz and Councilmember Hall for serving on that, and former Councilmember Goodman. And I'd like to invite Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder to introduce this item. Andrea?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I'm Andrea Snyder, the Deputy City Administrator, and had the pleasure of stepping this task force. With me today are Cynthia Craft, who was the chair, and also Jamie Finch, the Vice Chair of the task force. There are a number of other task force members, as you noted, Mayor, that are attending this evening. In addition to the council members who are on the dais today, there's also former council member Stacy Goodman, as well as task force member Susan Leonelli, and also Jason Voice. And we will talk a little bit more about the task force membership later this evening. Oh, also, excuse me, Brad Book is with us as well. We'll talk a little bit more about the membership later this evening, but certainly wanted to thank those task force members for attending and for all of their hard work throughout this process. We have some slides for you this evening, so Jean, if you could pull up those slides, thank you very much. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, as Mayor Polly said, the purpose of this task force is really, well, the purpose tonight is to provide a summary of the recommendations from the Capital Finance.
Andrea, this is Tisha. I think you may have laid something near your microphone. It's a little hard to hear you now, or that might have been on our end, actually. Tim, can we get?
Okay.
Hold on, just, Tim, can we get the audio up a little bit more? We're working on getting our audio sweet spot in here. I would go ahead, Andrea. We'll let you know if we have any other issues.
Okay, all right. Hopefully, this is better. Sorry about that, any difficulties in hearing earlier. So, the purpose tonight is to provide a summary of the recommendations of the Capital Finance Community Task Force Report that's in the agenda packet for this evening. And we are also requesting, as the mayor noted, city council action to receive the report. We'll talk about next steps at the end of the presentation. The next slide, please. Great. So, the purpose of the task force itself, Mayor Polly appointed the task force really following the drafting of the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, in July of 2021. Both city council and Mayor Polly noted that Isaguac has a number of unfunded infrastructure needs that have been identified, and the mayor wanted to create a task force that would draft criteria and ultimately recommend capital spending priorities among the major categories of capital needs as defined in the CIP, and these are parks and trails, transportation, utilities, and facilities, as well as equipment. And so, those are kind of the categories within the Capital Improvement Plan, and that's what the task force really worked from, was the CIP and the categories defined within there. The other purpose and task for this task force was to provide recommendations on how to fund the city's outstanding capital needs. So, we'll get into that in a little bit. One thing that I really wanted to note was that it was not a charge for this task force to come up with specific projects that needed to be moved forward. It was not for this task force to prioritize among the projects mentioned in the CIP. It was really to take a look at, across these categories, staying very high level, like I said, parks and trails, utilities, transportation, facilities, et cetera, across those categories, knowing that each category has a lot of unfunded needs. Where should the priorities lie? Where should the city's focus be when we try to implement some of those projects? So, that, just wanted to make sure that that was clear about what that charge of the task force was. And next slide, please. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Cynthia and Jamie to continue the presentation and talk a little bit more about the membership.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Deputy City Administrator Snyder. Good evening, Mayor Polly, council members. My name is Cynthia Craft, and along with Jamie Finch, we've been chairing this task force that's been going for six months. Might have felt like six years, but I don't know if you caught that, but before reviewing membership, I just want to say a couple of opening remarks. I want to thank Mayor Polly for convening this task force, and I really want to recognize the contribution of staff. Quite simply, Andrea and her team were excellent. I know that Andrea had a lot of support behind her as she performed the delicate business of helping us figure out what we think, without steering us towards or away from any particular direction. The report truly reflects the thinking of the task force. And I just want to remind us all that this kind of excellence from staff makes volunteering for advisory roles a worthwhile endeavor, makes it productive, and for me personally, it's a very satisfying endeavor. So, I want to thank the team for that, and I don't want it to be taken for granted. Membership, I wish to make a couple of points about membership. First of all, I want to come in, currently two, but previously three council members were served on this task force. I haven't done anything like this before, exactly, and I will admit to having been quite intimidated by having them at the, having their presence at the outset, or at the outset being intimidated, but it actually worked really, really well. They did a lot of listening, and they weighed in always just at the right moments with some practical information occasionally to keep us on track. I found it very productive, and it didn't take long before I was no longer intimidated, so thank you for that. The makeup of the group was very useful. Many of us shared specific boards, some were serving at large. Each of us was able to bring some depth from our own area of expertise. We also had a lot of time to listen to each other, to argue, to exchange ideas, and to attempt to persuade one another, which we did in many cases. And as a point of clarity, while each of us made use of our knowledge from our regular boards, we were tasked with representing only ourselves in this exercise, so it doesn't represent those boards that we served on in a formal way. I also just finally want to remark that this was a very, very engaged group. People showed up every time and came very well-prepared. I personally was very impressed. Next slide, please. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about process, and then we'll talk a little bit about the framing of the recommendations, and then we'll talk specifically about the recommendations. The best thing about the committee is that we were able to take a deep dive. We met 10 times in about five months, and that included the winter holiday break. Staff prepared important background information upfront, but the bulk of the meeting, the meeting time, was used for discussion among the task force members. I would also want to say that the group very dutifully adhered to the exercise of defining the criteria before selecting any particular priority. We honed the list to five or six criteria, and only after that did we score the buckets. We were very deliberate about this. I do want to note that the community survey was one of the criteria, but there were several other criteria, and they can be found on page six of the report. And while it may not have been unanimous 100%, there was clear consensus about our top priority. There was an opportunity to revisit that finding, but that consensus never wavered. Next slide, please. Okay, before framing the recommendations, I just want to make a note, and you may have picked up on a discrepancy between the slides and the report, and that there's kind of a higher-level recommendation. I think in the report, it's number two. It's not in the slide deck this evening, so you may have noticed that the numbers from three through eight are different. And that's because we felt like it was such a high-level comment that we, sometimes it got a little squishy in our mind, whether it was an outright recommendation or overarching theme. And that's that the task force does recommend that the city pursue additional funding for capital projects. The needs are simply too great to simply rely on, you know, a tightening-your-belt strategy. Fiscal prudence, of course, is always warranted, but we do not expect cost-cutting measures would really meet the city's needs. The gap is simply too great. In addition to that, I want to say generally, these slides, these recommendations are somewhat arranged in order of the level of consensus. They're also arranged, to some extent, in the order of the task force work. It basically starts with the most general parts of the assignment and works towards more specificity. I'll take the first two recommendations, and Jamie will do all the heavy lifting by taking the next five. We certainly invite questions along the way, or at the end, whatever works for you. Next slide, please. So, as it says right here in very simple language, of all of the unfunded capital needs, the task force recommends the city focus on transportation as the top priority. Quite simply, it scored highest by far on the criteria that we set out: return on investment, life safety, ambitious and visionary, addressing a pain point, as well as satisfaction and importance from the community survey. It's important to note that while it was beyond the scope of the assignment to define exactly what we all meant when we said "transportation," it was, it was not just a pie-in-the-sky group, list of transportation projects that we could imagine in our own heads. It was the Capital Improvement Plan, but we did not define what we meant when we said "transportation" kind of generally, and I think in some ways we, I think the important note here is that we did not simply mean reduction of vehicular congestion. So, we want to make sure that transportation is not somehow confused with congestion or traffic exclusively. Transparency and what can and cannot be done for congestion relief is paramount. We all agreed on that, and as is making sure that the benefits of investing in transportation are clearly articulated. Next slide, please. Now, if you're following along in the report, this would, recommendation number two would be that general statement I made about investing in additional funding sources. So, how do we recommend funding the priority number one? Well, the task force reached consensus that a transportation benefit district sales tax should be used to fund transportation-related capital projects. Using sales tax to close the gap in transportation funding does shift some of the burden to those who benefit from the infrastructure, those who shop in Isaguac, you know, both from Isaguac and from the region. We did recognize that there is a, I'm progressive, thank you, regressive, I didn't write this in my notes, but I did want to say that we recognize that sales tax was, is, tends to be regressive. However, the regional equity kind of won the day there, and then that is balanced with much of the general fund, funding that is a bit more progressive. We also reached consensus on the timing of implementation, four to six years. We had a really robust discussion on every aspect of our, of our recommendations, sometimes reaching resolution and sometimes agreeing to disagree. The funny thing is, is that task force members agreed on four to six years, but the rationale for that timing, we had varying opinions on why we should do that, but we didn't feel it was worth inhaling that all the way down. So, we settled on four to six years and then moved along. So, next slide, please.
Cynthia, do you mind if I just quickly hop in? I do think one thing to be clear on is, when we were talking about time periods, that was the time period for when the funds would actually start flowing, not when we would start the process. So, I do think that was just one important distinction to point out.
Yes, thank you, Jamie. So, I think we're ready for recommendation number three. Next slide, please, and I'm going to now pitch it off to Jamie to cover the next several recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia, and plus one to everything that you said about working with Andrea and the rest of the team, as well as the task force. So, my next, next recommendation that I'll be taking you through is number three here on the slide, number four in your packet, or in the recommendation report. And this is that the task force reached strong consensus that the city should pursue a Parks District on a longer timeframe. We felt that the Parks District was an equitable tool to address the unfunded Parks projects and would provide ongoing revenues for an important part of what makes Isaguac a unique community. We also referenced that there was a strong precedent of community support for investment in parks. And... in parks. One of the parts of our recommendation that was not quite as, at least it didn't have unanimous consensus was the timing. Generally, all but one of us felt that the longer term really focused on trying to make sure that our top priority of transportation, that that was funded and that we had that before we, we really went out to the voters with anything related to parks. That other task force member did feel that it was important to start that investment and the process towards a parks district earlier. But the rest of the task force, the real focus was ensuring that that top priority was addressed first than the specific year. So that was, that was really the focus though, was to ensure that we had closed out that top priority. A couple of other items that were discussed, but what really didn't have consensus or reach a final decision was some felt that you could consider extending the boundaries beyond the city limits of Issaquah, but others felt that this could impact the ability to get it passed or the amount that would be feasible to go out with. And then one of the things that the task force did have consensus on was as with all of our funding tools, the city should have complete transparency on the expected impact of the funds and how they would be spent relative to general fund dollars. All right, and we can move to the next slide. The next recommendation was that the task force felt that a levy lid lift was a tool that should be explored by the city, but we didn't reach consensus on how it would be best utilized. The main reasons the task force was interested in a levy lid lift tool was that it provides flexibility for how the funds can be used and is progressive in nature. The use and timing of this tool did not receive the same level of consensus as the previous tools we discussed, but there was general interest in evaluating as an option as the city better understands its needs, its needs. The two primary options for use discussed were as addition to TBD sales tax if transportation needs are determined to exceed the ability of TBD sales tax to cover and a mix of projects across the buckets that we discussed, primarily the facilities, transportation and parks buckets of projects. All right, and we can go to the next slide. The task force had consensus around encouraging the city to explore reducing the general fund ending balance closer to 15% to increase spending on infrastructure. With that being said, fiscal responsibility was stressed as the top priority that should guide any actions, but the majority of the task force felt it was worth considering given the city's conservative past policies related to the ending fund balance. The task force did not provide a specific use of funds that would be freed up for this approach, but the task force felt it would be appropriate to not only consider one-time capital costs, but also ongoing or operating costs to further support infrastructure such as a grant writer position. There was a minority of task force members who did not feel the city needed to make changes to the current approach to the, the ending fund balance or should set a more conservative figure. But in general, the majority of task force members did feel that this was something that should be explored. All right, and then next slide. The task force felt that the city should prioritize immediate infrastructure investments with American Rescue Plan Act funds, ARPA funds. We did reach consensus on the guidance for the use of the funds, but these were, oh, sorry, we did not reach consensus on guidance for the use of funds, but these were the primary suggested areas of focus. Facilities improvements to improve connectivity, cybersecurity and to help implement the climate action plan. Transportation particularly that helped basically prepare for future investments. While we did not reach consensus on this specific guidance, so the projects are focused, this was primarily because we, we really weren't at the project level to identify where kind of shovel-ready projects might, with, with not only the timelines and requirements that, that ARPA would require. So that was, that was part of the reason we didn't get to, to a lower level or more specificity around them. And then I believe that is the final recommendation I will be taking us through. And I'll be, actually no, I'm sorry, I'm taking on this one. This was another item. This is maybe the one out of this list of recommendations that we did actually have a lot of consensus despite it having a high number on the recommendation. So this was around bonding and the task force did have consensus that this was kind of in line with some of the overall comments around wanting for, wanting us to go big as well as encourage generational equity along with the projects that, that would be funded, that we should look at a, at bonding as opposed to a pay as you go approach. There was interest in, in looking at how some of the revenue tools we've, we've discussed might be put against councilmatic bonds or some other approach to, to ensure that we can go out and fund the projects that, and on the scope that, that we felt was necessary to really drive impactful change. And I think the next slide is where I will be handing it back. I keep on surprising myself. No, I'm taking this slide. This is just a summary of all of those, all of what we've discussed. As we mentioned throughout this process, we have put general timelines to our recommendations and when we should approach these. As I also mentioned, these timelines are when we would expect those funds to start flowing. So we should be making sure that we're building back from all of these timelines with all of the necessary preparations to get to that point. I don't think that there's probably too much else to call out on this slide. So I will hand it back to Cynthia.
Thank you, Jamie. So we had some recommendations for next steps and this first one has a lot to do with the fact that we really wrestled with not getting into the project level. We, we just kept having trouble staying at the bucket level. And one of the things that sued some of us at least was this idea that while we were able to select a priority area and let go of that for this exercise, it's obviously a very important thing to do. And so we are recommending that a robust community process happen. And we think we'd like to suggest that potentially even a task force of similar composition. I think most of us agreed that this group being brought together across, not really disciplines, but across subject areas was very powerful. That diversity was an asset. So I think, we think that this kind of task force might be useful when you're tackling these large, complex challenges. The second thing I wanted to say, we wanted to say is that, this is really important because we, this is now the third time in our presentation we've hit on it, and that's that the timing refers to when the money would be flowing. And we do recognize, there was considerable heartburn around the notion that these activities have long lead times. So we want to be sure that you understand that our recommendation is that those timelines are when the revenue would be flowing and that certainly quite a bit of preparation would need to be done in advance. And we all, I think, spread it a little bit, make sure that the appropriate advanced, you know, preparation would start on a timely basis. Finally, I'll just mention that red light cameras, we think that this should be used for improving, we think the existing program should be expanded and we think that it could be a good, we sort of, we pull it off of the revenue tools and just really characterize it as a, a specific tactic that we think is, is sort of its own animal. And we didn't see any reason that that should wait. Think it's a good idea and it should be used to fund improving public safety and transportation. So that concludes Jamie's and my prepared remarks. We're happy to take your questions now. I think Deputy City Administrator Snyder, that's such a mouthful, had some concluding remarks and so we can let her talk and you can ask any questions you like. We can certainly remain on hand. Thank you for this opportunity.
That's, that's great. Thank you so much, Cynthia. Jeanne, can you get us to the next slide, please? Just want to talk about next steps. So again, the action that the administration is requesting of council this evening is to receive the report. And then we will be returning next week at March 15th, a study session on March 15th to discuss implementation and hear more from the council about these, your perspective on these recommendations and which of these recommendations you would like us to move forward and how we should do that. So that's really the discussion for next week. At this point in time, I'd like to open it up for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrea and Cynthia and Jamie. Great presentation. Counsel, any questions? This was a six month long progress, many, many long meetings, many complicated topics. So, and thank you, Council President, for indicating, you're the first one to ask.
Indeed, thank you. So I'll stick to kind of questions about what the, you know, since we have the task force members here, I have tons of questions about the details, but I'm wondering how the task force came to the ARPA dollar amount of $9 million when they didn't look at projects
Thank you.
Andrea, you want to take that?
I was just going to say we didn't. It was, that, that was not an item that we specifically discussed, that number. As like that being the right amount, that wasn't a decision that our task force made and maybe Andrea could expand upon why that, that is, is included in the recommendation.
Sure. The city received $11 million in ARPA funds. We knew that some had already been spent and that there, there may have been opportunities to spend a little bit more of it. So we kind of took $9 million as a round number of ARPA funds that would be available to be spent on infrastructure. And then we took that $9 million number to the task force and said, is this, do you want to use $9 million of ARPA funds to invest in infrastructure, you know, or, or would you rather that go somewhere else? We talked about what types of expenditures are eligible with ARPA funds and ultimately the task force said, yeah, we think that spending this on infrastructure is a good way to expend the $9 million of ARPA funds the city has.
Can I continue with questions?
Right ahead.
Okay, fantastic. So, let's see. So debt was mentioned as a possible usage, but I didn't notice in the kind of summary and timeline chart where debt was considered as far as when that revenue, the task force thought would be most useful. So was there any indication that that was a short, mid or long term?
I can take that one. I think we generally felt that as a tactic, it could be applied against the revenue tools that we were evaluating, but we didn't specifically tie it to a source. It was more so a general openness to the idea of, of bonding versus a specific timing of when that would occur. Because we didn't get to the project level. Again, I think that was beyond, I think, the scope of where, where we discussed that
And then, you know, I know there was a consideration for a transportation benefit district as a kind of shorter term timeline, given the priority of those projects. I'm wondering if there was any consideration of moving the parks district forward, considering the community support for parks as a way to free up general funds that could then be used for those higher priority projects of transportation. So was there discussion about the freeing up of general funds and what that could be used for?
Yes, again, I can take this question. This was an area that we did have discussion around. I think it was a topic that we didn't have consensus on. We had a split on how that kind of approach could be used. And we ultimately felt that if we just, we weren't going to be able to, to reach a consensus that I think would justify a recommendation in this report around. So something discussed, but we didn't have resolution or clear resolution on it.
Excellent, those are my questions.
Oh, yeah. Cynthia, if I may just add, I think there was a little bit of heartburn around the concept that, that that could be a valid strategy. It was a strategy that we talked about, but there was a bit of heartburn around the idea that the parks district would then just replace general funds as opposed to adding it. And that just, as we talked through it, it started to feel, it didn't, it didn't feel, it didn't feel comfortable to have a new funding source without actually increasing funding. And that's how, as we talked it through, it, we couldn't shake that sense. So I don't know if that is helpful or not, but that, that just, it felt kind of problematic as we talked it through to just shift funding to a parks district. And it felt more responsible to think of parks districts as a reliable source of long-term funding. And we decided, as Jamie said, to not reach consensus or not try to reach resolution on how much of the general fund should remain over time. I don't know if that's helpful, but it did cause a lot of heartburn.
Fantastic, because those are my questions, so I appreciate and.
You have a follow-up?
No, that's great.
Thanks.
You're on mute, I believe? Am I still on mute?
It's a special microphone.
Okay, yeah.
That's good.
All right, I'll start again. Thank you for being here and presenting this tonight. My question was on the timing and I understand that you were working over the last many months during which the pandemic was, the situation with the pandemic was also changing. And in the recommendation regarding timing, it does discuss needing clarity about the effects from the pandemic on, on the economy. And so I wondered if there was change in that recommendation over time or if, if there was discussion about how best to monitor the recovery of the economy to continue to track this timeframe issue?
This is Cynthia, go ahead and take that. Thank you for your question. That, I would, I would not say, and others can correct me if I'm wrong, that, that our position evolved in, as the six months of the pandemic, you know, that's obviously a full 25% of the pandemic period. But I will say that we found ourselves having a different point of view about what may or may not be happening economically in the community. And it was the uncertainty and the lack of clarity on that. And we did not discuss any way to resolve that lack of clarity. But we first, some, some people were actually very concerned and didn't want to introduce anything because they were concerned about economic, you know, negative economic impacts. But we decided that we, it was too premature to conclude that all community members were feeling pessimistic about the economy and recognizing that some were hurting and some might not be and not really having enough clarity on that to make a recommendation. And it was really the uncertainty that drove that and we left it at that.
Okay, thank you.
I think one other, one other thing I would just add on to that was, I think there were some members that, that had concerns around the current economic climate. And there were others that just felt like the process to getting to that, to the first funding source, that TBD sales tax, that realistically the timelines were going to be close to that four-year mark anyways, even if we start now. So I think there was some that felt it was kind of, don't, don't jam the gas pedal and others that just felt that that was realistically how long it was going to take anyways, especially when we were looking at it from funds flowing, that that would probably be giving, has to go to the voters, a fairly realistic timeline.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele, do you have some questions?
I do. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay. We have this big area of transportation and I heard you say that you, you did not want to focus on just congestion or just traffic, but I am wondering what the conversation was around the mix of investments in transit, you know, versus roads versus bicycle paths? Was there that kind of discussion or were you just looking at this big area thing called transportation? So I'd just be really interested to know what the conversation was like.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think one of the areas that we did talk about this was when we I think one of the areas that we did talk about this was when we originally went through the community survey. There was definitely mention of congestion, but there's also a lot of the items that were identified as low satisfaction or high, low satisfaction, high importance, and therefore like ranked highly, were in other aspects of mobility. And so that was a part of us, our discussion around it being more than just congestion that the community was saying they had frustration around. Beyond that, because we weren't at the project level, we were very explicitly forbidden from looking at the project level. So we really didn't know, like, it would have been really difficult for us to have more specific conversations. I mean, I think that's where we feel like the next steps, that's really where there will be the level of detail necessary to determine that and make sure that it aligns with what community would support.
I could just follow up. I think it's sometimes difficult when we're talking about capital investments in transit because what kind of capital investments are you going to make when it's another organization, i.e. Metro Sound Transit, that actually controls the services being rendered? So it's a, you know, I struggle with that question a lot. So and I'm sure it'll be something that I'll bring up again. But I appreciate your response. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. That's a very, very good point. We have the levers we can operate and the others that we can't. And they all contribute to solving transportation issues. So thank you for bringing that up. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. First, thank you for the report. And I really appreciated the thoughtfulness and the nature of the recommendations. But I have one question because I'm really curious, because it stands out as a little bit different, which is your very last recommendation on the last page, which is around automated camera enforcement of traffic violations, which seems like a very distinct policy question, and not precluding policy questions. But you also said it wasn't necessarily about revenue. And so it seemed a little bit out of scope. And so I was just kind of curious why you put it in and what were you driving to? And you were driving very legally as you drove there, of course. But where were you driving?
So this is Cynthia. I'm wondering if it might be appropriate for former Councilmember Goodman to take this question because, and it actually, I commented on how excellent the attendance was. And I did watch the meeting, but that actually was, I saw that meeting on live. Jamie Finch led that one. So I'm gonna, is she promoted to panelist? I know we were going to just answer questions, but she had a lot to say on that. Is that possible? And is she available to answer that? Thank you.
Cynthia, has she been promoted? There she is. Good evening.
Good evening. Stacey Goodman here. So it was raised by me a couple of times as an opportunity for a couple of reasons. One, we've just, we've addressed it in several years ago, and it really didn't go anywhere. There's an opportunity to put traffic cameras in for safety reasons. And it does generate some revenue for the city, but it wasn't intended to be a revenue generator. And I think that task force felt as though they wanted to recommend that the council strongly consider it as, I guess, part of the overall transportation bucket, safety considerations, but not think of it as a revenue generator. If that answers questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray, I think one of the other parts about our city is that you are in the unique position of directly taking that revenue over expenses and allocating it to something that has got a nexus. That's not typical in many cities, but it's not really a revenue stream.
Yeah, no, I get that. The scope of the task force was around finance, and this is not a finance. And so I'm not opposed or in favor of, I just think it's odd. And that's why I was trying to understand where it was coming from.
It's a different flavor.
Yeah. So thank you.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Russell Joe. First off, I'd like to thank the committee for their hard work and dedication to this. It's a great report that we're going to be able to use going forward. I had a question about the ending fund balance discussion that you had. There was some discussion whether it should be, you know, 15% or 20%. And what kind of discussion was behind that? And if you could fill that in a little bit more, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, thank you for the question. This is Jamie Finch speaking. I think there was a couple of elements that I would highlight from that. One was just, we were given some reference points for nearby cities and kind of what was typical for cities to use. I think the other piece of context was that we were often ending the year significantly above that whatever we had set, we ended up significantly above. And I think a lot of our discussion was just around, I mean, it wasn't necessarily 15 versus 20, it was, how could we get, are there funds that are not being used or that could be put to use on infrastructure projects? So that was really the discussion. Those were the two main items I can remember. But Cynthia, or anyone else remembers any other items?
I'll just add that we wanted to, there was a comment to make sure it didn't affect our bond rating, but there seemed to be a lot of confidence that that wouldn't be problematic. But I think Jamie captured it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And just one comment on the red light camera revenue. I know that Scott Stewart, our municipal court judge, does go through those. And I have seen the tickets back there in his office. Could the administration at least consult with Scott Stewart, Judge Stewart, to see if we do go to, you know, six lights with red light cameras, how does that change his workload? He's not full-time. Whether that would bump him up to a full FTE? Or whether we would need to have additional pro temp judges come in and perhaps do some of that work?
That's a great point. Thank you. I think when it was discussed four or five years ago, the court costs were also included in our costing model. So want to make sure that we're not overwhelming our judge, that is for sure. Any other questions? Okay. If not, is somebody prepared to make a motion? Let's see. Yes. I would move to receive the Capital Finance Community Task Force Recommendation Report.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank all the folks that did spend six months on it. You know, we have so much talent at the commission level. And we just had, it was a very detailed, but also heartfelt series of conversations where we found consensus where we could and documented different ideas when we didn't have consensus. So I just, I thought that the citizen involvement was great. And whatever goes on next, if there is a, if there is further citizen input, I think the citizens who are part of that, you know, maybe different council members next time around, but a lot of those folks really did an amazing job. And I would love to see some through line for at least some of those folks on the next round of community engagement. Thank you.
That's great, thank you. Others for comments? Councilmember Hunt. Thank you. I wanted to also thank the committee for all of your hard work. And a few other comments. I do think it's very important, the acknowledgement that we can't build our way out of congestion and that there's only so much we can do. So when this comes back for our further consideration, I think one thing that will be important for us and also for the community engagement is really this concept of induced demands where you can spend quite a lot of money on infrastructure that then in a region that's growing as quickly as ours, cars can just come and take up that space. And it can very quickly be not efficient use of that funds. So I think that's an important concept for us to consider. And I appreciated that you on the task force pointed out that you had considered it in your discussions. And I think it's important that we continue to consider it in our discussions. One other comment that I wanted to make is also on the red light cameras. And I agree with Councilmember Ray. I think it, because it's in a conversation about revenue, for the most part, I want to make it very clear that I think it shouldn't be considered a tool for revenue. And so I would be interested in considering it at a policy level, especially if we have safety, compelling safety information about how it could potentially reduce accidents and make our intersections safer and things of that nature. But I would need to have that compelling evidence. And I also would want to potentially use this as one of our first equity lens policy discussions because traffic cameras, depending on where they are, they can affect different people differently. And so that's been an issue with some cities that have put in red light cameras. And I would want to make sure that we really achieve our goals of improving safety if we were to go that route. Thank you. Thank you. Other comments? Okay. So it has been moved and seconded to receive the Capital Finance Community Task Force Recommendation Report. And if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. I'm still getting used to this whole voting thing again. It's really cool to do it this old-fashioned way. I just wanted to sum up with a few little words as well. First, for Councilmember Hunt, I do believe the administration completely supports a separate policy discussion on the red light cameras. Wanted to make sure they were able to discuss it tonight because it did come up. And it is a kind of unique and different way of funding some safety projects. But yes, it should be a separate policy. That totally makes sense. And thank you for the equity comment. I really wanted to thank the council members that served and all the members of the task force for the significant body of work. In case those that are tuning in tonight and not knowing, we've never done this before. We have talked about our long list of unfunded projects. We have wondered if we have funding tools that we're not using. And you just got six months of fabulous conversation to unearth all of that. And honestly, it is like going back to school. They know a lot more about municipal financing than they probably ever wanted to know. And so they have become our local experts. And fabulous cross-section of community voices, like Councilmember Martz said, and a very, very difficult task. They are crafting a draft capital financing strategy, something we've never done as a body before because it's not something you can kind of whip up during a budget session. So appreciate all the hard work that went into it. Looking forward to future phases and conversations and completely agree with Councilmember Martz on how can we continue to use this wonderful resource that we have in a future phase? So thank you all very much. And thank you to the task force. Great job. Great job. Well done. The next item of business on our agenda this evening is AB 8309, the Human Services Strategic Plan. And the action item before council this evening is to approve the resolution. This item was last before City Council at the February 15th Council Study Session. And I'd like to invite Human Services Manager Monica Negriola to make her presentation. And I believe Susan Leonelli from the Commission is also going to be joining her tonight. So Monica.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council members. Thank you very much for having us back tonight. This is Monica Negriola, Human Services here in Issaquah. It is so great to see you all at the council chambers. And so before I start, definitely I would love to invite the Chair of the Human Services Commission, Susan Leonelli, to make a few remarks. Susan, thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Yes, thank you. And appreciate an opportunity just to provide a few thoughts on behalf of the Human Services Commission and our experiences in working with Monica and Hannah and staff as they work to assemble the presentation and the strategy as you have been involved with us over the last several months. I have been through two rounds of grant funding deliberations and recommendations as part of the Human Services Commission. And it's always a bit difficult to make sure that you're doing the right thing that matches the city priorities and spends the funds that we have in the most appropriate way because there are so many needs and so many considerations to take into account. So the work that the team has put together is incredibly informative for that work that the Human Services Commission will be going through again in the upcoming months. And it offers a very critical context and prioritization around what the city's needs and priorities are. So it's very helpful to us as we consider the trade-offs that need to be considered. It also helps us organize multiple bodies of work that are going on in the human services space and ensures that we do have this overarching view of all the jobs that need to be done by the city and how the city can play a role and where they can play a role. And again, where the priorities and interests lie. Personally, it was a very rewarding and satisfying process to go through because Monica and Hannah and the team engaged the Human Services Commission at multiple points along the way, shared with us what they were hearing from the multiple points of connection with the community. We had a dialogue, we learned from each other. And the input from the Human Services Commission was infused at several points along the way. And so finally, I just wanted to extend, on behalf of myself and the Human Services Commission, a big thanks to the team that did the heavy lifting, who you well know, Hannah and Monica for their vision, and the Human Services Commission members for the insight that they added. And of course, to city leadership and our mayor and our city council for prioritizing this very important effort. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you. Back to you, Monica.
Thank you very much, Susan. We so, so appreciate you. Thank you for being with us. Councilmember, allow me just a moment to share my screen so I can start the presentation. And I hope, I have two PowerPoints on, and I hope it's the right one. I am lucky it is the right one. Give me just a moment. Okay, so here we are. So we are returning to you tonight, City Council, to seek approval of a resolution that adopts the Human Services Strategic Plan. This is Issaquah's first Human Services Strategic Plan. So we are very excited and anxious at the same time. As a brief reminder, our goal with creating the strategic plan was really to provide information that would help inform the community priorities in human services for the next five years. And also to provide a roadmap, if you wish, for policy decisions, for investments, and allocations of funds, but also for advocacy and technical assistance needs. A little bit about the background and the timeline. By the way, since this is, the third time this agenda item is in front of you, I will provide just a high-level brief overview, however I am available for questions if I don't go in enough details on any of the items here. But in terms of a brief background, the Human Services Strategic Plan incorporates and builds upon prior work conducted on the community needs assessment, but also on the healthy community strategy. With work being paused in 2020 due to the pandemic, but also due to organizational restructuring, we restarted this work in June of 2021. And in the first part, between June and September, we conducted an updated community needs assessment. As you may recall, in our previous presentations, we had robust interviews and community engagement process with a robust equity lens. Followed, following the community needs assessment in the fall, between October and December, we worked, continued to work with the community and with the Human Services Commission to develop the goals and the plan. And then by the end of December, we drafted the first plan and then continued to work with the community, with the Human Services Commission, and with UCD Council, making edits to the draft plan. Here just a few highlights of the plan development, from the plan development, I mean, I'm sorry. While doing this work, really has been important to us that we aligned the work with other city plans. It was also important that we really conducted a robust and meaningful community engagement from language access to reaching out to those who were low income or... from language access to reaching out to those who are low income or individuals who are homeless. And we really tried to reach far and wide. Also, we were very intentional about applying an equity lens and identifying communities most disproportionately impacted by needs in the human services arena. As mentioned, we updated the community needs and really the focus areas and goal development. It was important for us that they directly responded to the needs that we identified in the community. Just a brief review here of the strategic plan content areas. Of highlight are perhaps the area, the beginning area where we talk about who we are. I would like to highlight that, among other things, it describes the human services roles and functions as being a policy framer, a funder, a connector, an advocate, a supporter. The what we learned area is one of the most extensive areas in the plan. It includes really a really comprehensive list of the existing resources in Issaquah, but also provides compelling and heartbreaking data at the same time on some of the needs identifying the community. I apologize, I heard an. Oh, there's some feedback. Apologize. Okay, I'm going to move forward. The city clerks, please interrupt if I need to do something. The where are we going section covers the goals and actions that we work on with community. Moving on, the next, this is a brief summary of the edits that we conducted during the first round of edits. We included and highlighted some additional specific populations, content areas, in particular seniors, low income residents who are working at minimum wage jobs, community needs by population. We also identified icons for different budget categories and added additional visual elements, made brief edits, grammatical revisions, and just general content review. Since the last council study session, the one on February 15, we reviewed and edited performance measures to include additional metrics and more, especially with a lot of focus, more focused on including more outcome related metrics. Here I want to make a brief note that some of the outcome measures, you might have seen there noted in Exhibit C of your agenda packet. We have a detailed table that describes all the changes that we had made. And I would like to just add that some of those measures may be individual, programmatic, or community level metrics. However, due to the limited role that we have in impacting community level measures, you will see more performance measures focused on individual or programmatic level rather than community level measures. And so with that, our recommendation, of course, is to approve the resolution that adopts the Issaquah Human Services Strategic Plan. In terms of next steps, with adoption, hopefully following the adoption, we would like to use this document to help inform the 2023-2024 Human Services Grant Cycle. We would also like to return to city council for a more robust conversation on the Human Services Grant Program. And we are very anxious and excited to begin implementation of the plan. And so with that, before I am available for questions, with your permission, I would love to just take a moment to say a few thanks and acknowledge some of the team members who are part of this process from the very, very beginning. Definitely I would love to start, I would love to start with the Human Services Commission. And they've been instrumental in helping us and guiding us through this work. But also our nonprofit partners, many of whom were interviewed more than once, they also participated in community workshops. They were really, really helpful and partners in this work. And with that, I also would love to acknowledge and thank to a few internal staff. I would like to start with Jeff Watling, the Director of Community Parks and Community Services here at the city, for his guidance and continued support. We are just so, so grateful to have him. And then other city staff, Thomas Rush, our community coordinator, who took our content and put it into this beautiful piece of art, if I may say. Dale Markey Krim was instrumental in helping us create outcome measures and performance measures. And least but not least, the human services staff, Marisol and Amir, with helping us reach out to different community members. And with that, I would definitely would love a special shout out to Hannah Roberts, our Human Services Coordinator, who really from day one worked tirelessly alongside with me in making this project a reality. And so with that, thank you very much, council members. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Monica. And thank you for getting this work done during this strange time of COVID. That was a big, heavy lift to do, and we appreciate it very much. Looking for council questions. Oh, Councilmember Martz.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This whole thing with working with a single screen as opposed to having like three screens is really, I don't know how I'm going to proceed. I have a question about timelines. So I look at one of the, one of the actions is convene and facilitate a local community partnership work group to address homelessness response in Issaquah. And I see a start date of Q1 2022. And I see a revision and target date of December 2024, which is, my math tells me, a long ways away. So can you tell me a little bit more? I'm assuming that it isn't the goal to get something like that kicked off by December 2024, that it would be sooner than that. But tell me a little bit, I see, there's a lot of December 2024s in here. So using this as an example, can you tell me a little bit about how these deadlines will kind of relate to the timing of when you try to get things done?
Yes, thank you so much for that question. Since initially the goal of the plan was to create, to really, it was a five year plan. We felt that creating all those action items for five years, it seemed too long. And so typically then we chose about two dates. One was 2023 and the other one was 2024. 2024 was used also kind of as the end of this funding cycle for human services. So it was like a two year mark, if you wish. Absolutely, the intent with this particular goal that you called out is not to begin kind of, I can convene a group, but to really see pause in two years and see how far we've gone with coordinating homelessness in Issaquah.
Okay. Because I mean, this one looks really important and really good and eager to see, I mean, I'm sure there'll need to be some interim steps, like get, you know, get the work group formula, you know, get a charter by a certain time, get it staffed by a certain time, get it constituted by a certain time. So anyhow, good luck on that. So that December 2024 is really, you want to come back and you see, want to see what progress was made on this, right? Is what I'm hearing?
Yes, absolutely. And especially with a topic such as homelessness, there are so many things that need to happen in parallel and at the same time. On one end, we need intervention and we need intervention now, right? And we started that. But at the same time, there's still the larger planning that needs to happen locally, but also regionally. And so again, there's just so many things that need to happen in parallel. But yes, absolutely, we would love to have different points in time when we do check ins.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Any other questions? And if not, do I have somebody who wants to make a motion?
Let's see, I've got to find it here. Yes, I would like to move to approve resolution number 2022-06, adopting the Issaquah Human Services Strategic Plan.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? It's my remarks.
Yeah, I really want to thank Monica and the team. Looking at the metrics here, you know, I had said focusing on output, focusing on, within focusing on output, qualitative, quantitative is good, quantitative output is good, qualitative output is even better. And I really see a lot more of that in these metrics. So thank you for strengthening that. I think it will really allow us to talk more about how much the needle has moved.
That's great. Any other comments or discussion? Council President?
Thank you. I also want to thank the staff and just the community that has supported this effort. Susan Leonelli, I really appreciate coming to speak to us and talk about how this as a tool not only gets used by the city, but makes our human services grant process more robust, more effective. And so seeing how the people that are going to use this are already looking at it as an effective tool, I think speaks very highly to not just taking the time to create a report, but really doing so in-house with people who are involved in the work and understand what the community, not just the community needs of our human services needs, but the staffing and the volunteer members' needs in order to do the important work that we've set out for them. So I think this is just a fantastic plan that has a whole lot of thought to it, and I look forward to utilizing this as our community moves forward.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I think this is a plan that we can be so proud of when I am with my fellow colleagues on the East Side Human Services Forum, and that is all of the cities that are on the east side. And I know that we are ahead of them in so many ways in terms of planning, in terms of defining the scope, in terms of putting forward possible solutions in a coherent plan. I am just so proud of this body of work. And thank you, Monica and Hannah and everyone who worked on it. In 2020 and 2021, we hit, I guess, the perfect storm. But some of the problems that arrived during that period have been building for a long time before, even before COVID hit. But when COVID hit, all of a sudden, it was absolutely apparent how important our human services network and agencies and efforts are in the moment of a humanitarian crisis like the pandemic. And for this body of work to come out of that pandemic period is absolutely commendable. We did receive a comment, and I appreciate the comment regarding the breadth and scope of the problems that have been defined. And I want to say that it is almost overwhelming to read through, not only at the broad level, but the granular level that you achieved, which is fabulous, and see how many things we absolutely need to do soon. But you know, I am really glad to have that big comprehensive view. I think it's always important for us to understand the depth and the breadth of the problems that we're facing and the challenges that we have. So I'm sure as the dialogue continues and as you come back to us, we're going to be able to work our way through it because we have laid in front of us this really clear picture of all of the things that we need to be doing. So thanks to staff. I will, in case anybody's worried, I will be supporting and voting for this plan. Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you very much, Mayor Pauli. Councilmember Hall, I guess I don't have to repeat my name anymore.
So many new things.
Yeah, wow. You know, just real quick, before I get into some of my comments to build off of what Councilmember DeMichele said, I completely agree absolutely that we cannot even begin to problem solve in the human service space here in Issaquah unless we have a comprehensive and complete understanding of the needs that exist out in our community. And what this, what I'm really happy about this plan because of what it does is it really clearly demonstrates what the gaps and the needs are. And it clearly describes what our role is as a connector, as a funder, as an advocate, as a collaborator, that was mentioned earlier, and lays out essentially an equation for us to begin to start, not even just to begin, but to begin to start solving the human service needs and to begin to continue our partnerships with our human service organizations and other government partners in the area. Couple other things I just wanted to say about this. It's a very compelling story and it paints a very clear picture, oftentimes a very shocking picture, of human services needs that exist out in Issaquah. And with tonight's adoption, we renew both our commitment and affirm a new strategy for meeting those needs. So just like the others, I'd like to thank Director Watling. I'd like to thank Monica, Hannah, anyone else who touched this work for your tireless efforts and your passion, and I'll be supporting this measure tonight, too.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank the Human Services Commission for all the hard work on this plan. I would point out that on page 32 under section 3.2, I like the way that the plan is forward looking in the sense that we recognize that there will be people in our community that we're serving right now, but there'll also be people from places of distress such as Ukraine that may be coming to our country. And so lack of providers that are familiar with culture and language is 3.2, and I appreciate that we recognize that as one of our weaknesses and that we may need to have someone that is familiar with Ukrainian culture and language coming up here in the near future. Also, 4.5, lack of awareness of existing resources available. Certainly those individuals that may be seeking shelter from war and distress will also need to be informed and familiar with the programs that are here. I'm glad this program also does that in a forward looking way so that as people come to Issaquah, they feel welcome and they feel that we are upholding our vision to be a welcoming, inclusive, and equitable community. So I really appreciate this work. I hope that we're cognizant of some of the future residents that will come to Issaquah with certainly somewhat unique needs, and I look forward to seeing how we will fulfill our obligation in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Any other comments? Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 2022-06. 2022-06, thanks. Adopting the Issaquah Human Services Strategic Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? It carries unanimously. Thank you, and thank you very much, Monica and Susan, for coming tonight. Next item, oh, thanks, Monica. Next item of business is AB 8345, Rental Assistance Program Amendments. And the task before the council this evening or the request is to authorize. This is the first time that this item is coming before council. And I will keep Monica, Human Services Manager, up there to take us through this one as well. Monica.
Hello again. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Allow me to start sharing my screen. And while I do that, I wanted to mention that along with me here tonight, we have staff from Hope Link and also from Imagine Housing, who I'm gonna introduce to you in just a few moments. And before that, I will start the presentation and just make a brief introduction. So as Madam Mayor mentioned, we are seeking your authorization tonight to modify the Issaquah Rental Assistance Program that was created back in October of 2021. Specifically, we are seeking two things. On one end, we would like to request your approval to lift the three month limit on rental assistance provided through this program to include all rental reurages. And second, we would like to request that we redistribute the original allocation of $500,000. $500,000 for rental assistance to include $350,000 to Hope Link. This would be a contract amendment for us. And then also allocate up to $150,000 to Imagine Housing. And this would be us entering into a new contract with our nonprofit partner. And so, as we were talking earlier about the Human Services Strategic Plan and about the role that our nonprofit partners play in this, I would really like to highlight, as it was also highlighted in the strategic plan, the difficult time that nonprofit organizations go through, especially during this time. They've been tirelessly serving the community for two years and helping with the pandemic. But as all of the other, as the entire economy and all of the other organizations, they are going through a very, very difficult time, especially in terms of staffing. I know that that's not new for anyone. Everyone has a lot of staffing issues. I believe, though, that nonprofit organizations, especially in a state like Washington, especially in an area such as Greater Seattle with so much large technical organization, technology organization, nonprofit organizations have a really, really hard time, just as many other agencies in addition to staffing because of the pandemic and just being tired because of the pandemic, they also might have lost staffing because of vaccination mandates. So, they are really, really going through a rough time. But I'm gonna continue with my presentation. Thank you for allowing me to speak to that a little bit, and you may hear from our partners in just a few minutes. I want to just provide a brief background of the Rental Assistance Program. On October 18 of 2021, City Council approved and authorized $500,000 to create the Issaquah Rental Assistance Program. This was created utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funds, also known as ARPA. And so, I'm gonna just provide a brief summary of the program. The Rental Assistance covers up to three months of overdue rent per household. And also, the program was really created to fill the gaps of the existing programs in place, such as the King County Eviction Prevention and Rental Assistance Program, also known as EPRA, which covered rent arrears for residents with incomes below 50% of the area median income. This program in particular was extended to fill the gaps and to cover household rent assistance for residents at or below 80% of the area median income. Also, residents benefiting of this program need to have a demonstrated need of temporary financial assistance because of the COVID impact. And so, with that, our partner, chosen partner for this program was Hope Link. And with that, I'm gonna pause here to introduce two of the staff from Hope Link who are with us tonight. Megan Ultimore, Vice President of Community Services and Operational Excellence is with us, as well as Lucy Pyatt, Director of Energy and Financial Assistance Program. And while they're getting on the screen, I'm just gonna provide a brief update from Hope Link. As of March 1, Hope Link provided various services related to the program. They implemented the ARPA guidelines and requirements, including eligibility and reporting forms to comply with the federal requirements. They hired and trained staff. They paid rent arrears on behalf of 13 households, which is approximately $45,000. They approved and authorized payment for additional 13 households, which is about $50,000. And they're currently in the process of making payments, and they're processing 45 requests for 45 households, which is an estimated amount of about $150,000. I'm gonna pause, though, here because I would love to invite them and to present a summary of their highlights of the program and other challenges that they might want to speak to. Megan and Lucy, welcome.
Thank you so much, Monica, and Mayor Polly, and all of the council members for having us here tonight. I'm excited to be here as a Hope Link representative, but also as a resident of Issaquah. I don't often get to speak to my own council, so thank you so much. We're really honored to have been given the opportunity to really help the residents of Issaquah who are living with the fear and the trauma of losing their housing. And we understand what a significant investment of dollars this is. We are really proud to say that over the last two years, throughout our service area of North and East King County, we've distributed $3.5 million of rental assistance. And that is seven times what we would have normally distributed. So, it really has been a powerful period of time of both pain of our community members as well as the incredible generosity of our residents and certainly the partnership with our local cities and other levels of government. As Monica mentioned, we have had a bit of a delay in getting this program off the ground, and we want to be fully transparent with that. We have completed our ARPA grant with City of Bellevue. We have the partnerships with other local cities. And with the staffing on this one, we would get someone hired and lose them. And we are now completely ready to go. Lucy Pyatt, our director, will be telling you the details of the timing on that. But I really do want to thank the council for your trust, and I want to thank Monica for her partnership because she has been working so closely with our team to make sure that this was ready to go and that all qualifications for the federal funds would be met to support the city in the expending of these ARPA funds. Most importantly, we're very honored and grateful to the fact that both Hope Link and the city have a shared mission to make sure that we are serving the residents of our city who are really, again, dealing with that trauma and the fear of losing their housing. So, I just wanted to be here tonight to thank you, to really reiterate our commitment to this work, and to, if necessary or if needed or just wanted, to answer any questions that you might have. So, I'll turn it over to Lucy Pyatt, our Director of Energy and Financial Assistance.
Hi, thank you, Megan and Monica, and the City Council and Mayor for giving us this space and time. It's good to see some of you again. I know that we got to discuss this back in, I believe, September, October, as we were looking at the program. As Monica has shared, we have finally gotten to the point where we feel like we're operating at our capacity and able to move our request for assistance with this fund through quickly. We have had, since we launched the program, 115 requests from Issaquah residents for financial assistance or rental assistance. Of those, we have cut the checks for 13 households representing over $50,000. We have 19 households who are on the verge of completing their application process with us and getting that assistance out, representing $66,000. And so, 32 total households from the 115 have been paid or on the verge of being paid. Like we said, we have a number of outstanding payments that we anticipate processing through about 45 households in the coming weeks, and then assigning the remaining 26 households from our waitlist to be served hopefully by the end of March. And so, we really saw a big initial drive and push for requests from Issaquah residents, and that has tapered to a more, on a monthly level, smaller volume, giving us time to kind of work through that initial volume. We've also worked in exploring the partnership options with Imagine Housing and putting different processes in place that adjust to the various needs of those residents as well. And some of the highlights that we can share for the households who we're currently working with or have worked with, it does show really the picture of need that we continue to see across the board of households who have exhausted all savings options, who with the Omicron surge found themselves with reduced hours or medical costs that were unexpected, as well as those who were hit by Delta at the end of 2021. One household that we had was a family with three children who had exhausted short-term disability payments and were trying to scrape by on long-term disability at 60% of their income, with their housing cost taking up 50% of their incoming income. We were able to cover $5,200 in rent owed and connected her to our food program as well. We also had a client who worked in commercial real estate prior to the COVID launch and tried to get by with gig jobs and driving throughout until they found that the little bits of rent that they weren't able to cover month to month added up to be about a full month of rent that they just didn't see that they would ever be able to cover. These Issaquah funds allowed us to pay $2,000 to get them caught up and also connected them to our employment program to explore work opportunities. And so, we are really proud of the work that we've done thus far and are especially excited to see more results this coming month as the work building the program and supporting the program and training the staff to do the program starts showing the results that we have been looking for. So, thank you again. Monica has been just an invaluable partner through all of this in making sure that we're all clear on ARPA requirements and that our files are meeting the standards that we need to meet, as well as being a great touch point through the adaptations we've made to address staffing and programming along the way.
Thank you very much, Lucy and Megan, for joining us tonight. So, so appreciating you, and again, we so appreciate the partnership with Hope Link, providing so, so many different services and not just rental assistance. So, thank you. So, with that, council members, I'm gonna continue the presentation. Next, I would like to say a few words about what is our goal with the proposed changes and amendments to the program. Really, as Megan even mentioned, really, our goal first and foremost is to improve benefits for residents. We want to make sure that residents receive the assistance that they need and they don't face evictions. Next, we would like to also ease some of the administrative burden. You're gonna hear a little bit in a few minutes about the ARPA funds versus general funds. But also, I think with this proposal, we hope that we can also ease the administrative burden, especially with staffing difficulties for the last few months. We hope that by taking on a portion of the administration of the funds, Hope Link can focus on the other apartment complexes and residents who are currently in the process and still need to be processed. And with that, we also hope to just increase timeliness for dispersing funds for everyone, again, with our main goal being the residence of Issaquah. And I really, really so appreciate both of our nonprofit partners just working together, and we will continue to work together to collaborate and find ways to help our residents, our shared goal. And so, with that, I'm just gonna talk a little bit in more detail about the two proposals for you tonight regarding the three-month limit on rental assistance. Would love to just say that this will provide opportunities for those who have rent arrears of more than three months to really be caught up through this program and get a fresh start. We thought that perhaps this notification could impact the total number of households and residents eligible to receive funds. And while this is true, based on our check-in with both Hope Link and Imagine Housing, we learned that perhaps the level of impact might not be as big as we probably thought. Of course, if we increased the number of months that somebody can get assistance, perhaps less number of households could get help. However, after checking with Hope Link and with Imagine Housing, it looks like altogether from all the households that contacted Hope Link and from all the households who are behind in rent from Imagine Housing, we are only talking about 30 households who have more than three months or who are behind in rent for more than three months. So, perhaps although there is an impact, perhaps the impact is not as big as one might think, or as I want to honestly say originally thought. Next, regarding the distribution of the allocation of funds. As we mentioned, we are hoping to distribute up to $150,000 to Imagine Housing by entering into a new direct contract with them. And I just want to say a few things about and highlight a few things about what does it mean to directly contract with us as a city. So, Imagine Housing will have to meet the city contractual requirements, which include, but they're not limited, to insurance requirements, to providing copies of the business licenses for the properties in Issaquah, for providing the audited financial statements for the organization, submitting to audits in person and online audits that we may conduct as a city. Imagine Housing will also have to provide proof of the rental assistance and needs, but also prove that money will be applied to the households who are behind in rent in Issaquah. The organization also will commit to not evicting tenants with overdue rent for which payments are made by the city. Imagine Housing will also provide us with basic demographic information regarding the residents who will receive assistance and will also maintain cities' reporting and invoicing requirements. And so, we will continue to work with both Hope Link and Imagine Housing to ensure that there's no duplication of services and then to coordinate those services in the upcoming month. And with that, I'm gonna pause again here for a moment because I would like to invite Sean Heron, who is the CEO and President of Imagine Housing, is the interim CEO. And I would also like to invite Molly Judge, who is the Director of Fund Development, to join us and say a few words. Sean has been interim CEO for now nearly, I believe, a year, or maybe even a little bit over a year. Sean, I can't remember, time is becoming fuzzy here. Would love to hear from you on any of the changes, any of the concerns, anything that you would like to share about Imagine Housing. And this, we would love to.
Well, thank you very much, Monica. Good evening, Mayor Polly and members of the City Council. I am Sean Heron, and I'm the interim CEO President at Imagine Housing. And I've been with Imagine Housing since January of last year, so a little over 12 months. So, you know, first, I want to say I want to thank all of you on behalf of our organization and the residents in Issaquah who reside in Imagine Housing properties for your appreciation for considering this item. And I want to acknowledge Hope Link for their flexibility. And it's not often that nonprofits are willing to share a portion of a previous allocation. So, I think that just speaks to our partnership and collaboration. Imagine Housing has four properties in Issaquah. We have 131 units, including our first property, Andrew's Arms on Front Street. And we have, of those, about 44 households who are in delinquent rent. The report you have indicates that we think it's around 140,000 would get people covered through the month of March. We don't know exactly because it's still just a little too early in the month to have firm numbers there. But I wanted to share one puzzle that all of us in the housing business have struggled with, which is that in order to assist residents with gaining access to rental assistance funds, and we, of course, wanted to make sure that we did not get in the way of any resident accessing those funds, those residents needed to be delinquent in their rent payments. So, we needed to allow them to become delinquent in order for them to access those funds. And the importance of expanding beyond three months is this. The county's EPRA program that Monica spoke to a couple minutes ago paid most of the people in our housing programs through the month of October. It forward paid three months that ended in October, and many of the folks who are delinquent more than three months are delinquent back into November. And so, at this point, obviously, that's more than three months. And that's the importance of getting everyone, everyone kind of zeroed out so that we can of getting everyone kind of zeroed out so that we can restart the process of collecting rents. So, now that we believe at least the transmission of the virus has started to wane, I don't want to speak to the impacts, which are still severe for many households. Imagine Housing is starting to work very hard to zero out accounts across our portfolio in all the Eastside Cities and getting people to get back into the habit of paying rent. I think there's a little echo there, I'm sorry. And I don't know, Monica or members of the council, I know there were some public comments, and I'd like to address those, but you can tell me when's the best time to address those.
Go ahead right now, that would be fine, Sean.
Okay, thank you. So, one of the comments raised was about returning money to the county and to the EPRA program. We work with a third-party property management company, Allied Residential. One of their responsibilities is to ensure that all funds received and applied to residents' accounts are done so according to the various regulations, so whether those are Section 8 payments or payments from other third parties or rental assistance payments. And so, we had one household in Isiqua that was overpaid, and so they received more than three months forward rent. And so, when that was understood and when the property management company realized that, they had to make an adjustment and actually send a portion of that payment back to the county. Of course, we're very interested in making sure that we're not sending money back, but we also have to be following the regulations. So I want to highlight that one point, and of course, that's confusing sometimes, but that was the situation in that situation. We also have, we have two individuals who work for the third-party property management company, and they are related, a mother and a daughter. They do not work in the same property. They do work in different cities, but we don't have any property where we have all of the staff in the same family. We also, one of the things I set up early in my tenure was a process by which residents who weren't able to get their issues resolved, their questions answered or complaints addressed at the property level could directly communicate with our Met Central Office. And so, we have a well-publicized, well-advertised resident comment line. It can be done with a voicemail or an email. We look at those every day. And so, that's a way for people to, as I said, if they're not getting their issue resolved at the property level. We do not get very many comments there, less than, I think, two a month. But I want to just assure you that we have that process. In terms of transparency, Monica listed all the various ways in which if you were to approve this item and we get into contract with the city of Isiqua, there's many mechanisms contractually and just procedurally by which our books are open, the process is transparent. We will, of course, communicate with the city all of the accounts which are accredited and how all those are resolved. We have two, we processed about $1.5 million of EPRA funds in two installments in 2021. We also have two ongoing rental assistance programs that we administer. One is with the Washington Department of Commerce. That also applies to Isiqua properties. And we also have a rent subsidy program with, ongoing program with King County for folks who come out of the homeless system. So, I think, you know that we operate in a space where we're using lots of public money and we operate under a very regulated environment, but we also have two ongoing similar programs. So, I think finally, I think there was one comment about wanting to target the funding to a lower AMI. All of our properties cap out at 60% AMI, and so of the 44, I will say we have 25 or 30 of those households are under 50% AMI, but the highest income is under 60. So I want to just assure you that in our program, the funds are targeted to low-income families. And that, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Sean, thank you very much for your comments and for joining us tonight. Very, very much appreciating you and your team. Council members, I'm going to continue just for a few moments here with basically summarizing that our recommendation from the administration would be to obtain your support in making the amendments to the initial program by lifting the three-month limit on rental assistance and by allowing us to redistribute the original allocation of the money for rental assistance. And so, if you support this recommendation, our next steps would be to move into making a contract amendment with HopeLink and also entering into a new contract with Imagine Housing. And so, this concludes my presentation, and we are available for questions.
Thank you, Monica. Council, if you have any questions for Monica or any of our panelists, now would be the time to indicate. Council President followed by Council Member DeMichele.
Thank you. Monica, our packet noted that city staff contacted other low-income apartment complexes, but the packet doesn't really say what the outcomes of those contacts were. So, I'm wondering if there's a request from any others for direct funding? And do we understand the scope of the need outside of Imagine Housing? And is the remaining amount left in the HopeLink contract enough to handle and, I wouldn't say cover, the entire need, but address a portion of the need that we know of?
Thank you very much, Council President. That is a great question, and that is, and the information, I don't have the complete answer quite yet, as we were working last week on this just last moment. But Hannah Roberts, our Human Services Coordinator, was able to get in touch with nine apartment complexes late last week. We did not make it in time for the packet to be published. We did identify two of them that had higher rent arreages. I apologize, I have a really hard time pronouncing that word. So, without getting sidetracked, we identified the YWCA. They have, they're behind a total with about $60,000, and we identified a plan with them in connecting them directly with HopeLink. Similar, HopeLink has some mechanisms in place where they can speed up the process by working directly with the Y. And so, there's another apartment complex that we identified that they have a larger amount of rent for which the residents are behind. We still need to investigate a little bit that, and we need to work with HopeLink because we are not sure how many of the residents already applied to HopeLink and they might be in process. And also, that apartment complex shared with us that unfortunately, some of their residents have incomes of over 100% AMI, which may not qualify anyway. So we just need to do a little bit of more investigation. And as now, we are going to set aside the contract for Imagine Housing. We are going to work with HopeLink to see who are those residents that are currently on the waitlist? And if we identify that money is not enough, we can come back with an additional request. But that's exactly the note that I expressed to them. We have a meeting later this week to discuss because I was questioning, like, do we have enough money? So, based on the information that we have, we believe that we are right there where we have enough money, but we just don't have all the details quite yet.
Thank you. Council Member DeMichele.
Thank you. I've been reading this past week about this so-called final decision, capital F, capital D, on ARPA funding. And so, is part of what we're doing here making it easier both to get the funds out and also comply with ARPA funds regulations? And I'm not asking for an explanation of the final decision, but really, the impact of that? And also, did that just occur recently because it's been a long wait getting that decision out of the federal government?
And I see our Finance Director just turned the camera on. Robert, I'm not sure if you would like to speak to that, but I think my short answer is that my understanding is that, yes, the final ruling just came out recently, which seems to be quite different from the initial ruling. So, that also has an impact, and you're going to hear a little bit about that later tonight.
Okay.
Robert, would you like to add something else?
Yeah, we have the separate budget amendment, so we'll be, Council Member DeMichele will be speaking a little more about that. But that is correct. It took about three weeks ago, the final rule came out, but the interpretations of the final rule and the explanations of the final rule are still coming out. And some of our reporting requirements changed per the final rule. We went from annual reporting requirements to quarterly reporting requirements. So there's, there are some certain dramatic changes and also some changes to the subrecipient relationship. And so, that's why you'll see the budget amendment later tonight. But that was the reason, to try to get the money out the door, but also make sure that, you know, our subrecipients, if they're smaller like Imagine Housing, that they're not hamstrung by requirements that they can't meet.
Thank you.
Robert, just to clarify, you know, Council Member DeMichele's question, we're still on the first AB. So, I wonder if I can just rephrase something and you tell me if this is correct. In the first AB, Imagine Housing will be using general funds to, or rental assistance.
Yes.
And HopeLink will be using a lesser amount of the designated ARPA funds, but they will be using ARPA funds.
That is correct.
So, is that what you were trying to get at, is how were they going to meet the final decision?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Council Member Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli, and thank you for that clarification because it kind of obvious a need for one of my questions. But is there something specifically that Imagine Housing can't do to qualify for ARPA funding? I mean, because Monica, you talked about all of the things that we're expecting from them in reporting, so there's definitely an administrative overhead associated with it. So I'm kind of curious, and I'm kind of leaping ahead, but I think it's important, what are the administrative kind of activities that HopeLink is doing that Imagine Housing can't that's kind of driving us to this general fund decision?
There are more specific and more detailed forms that go with the ARPA funds, which then create a slower process. And so, our intent, the intent was to speed up the process in which the organization can receive the funds. That was the decision that we took, that the fastest way for them to get access to funds would be to use general fund dollars. And so, HopeLink, we checked in with them if it would make a difference for them if we switch everything to general fund dollars. But because HopeLink already spent three months in not only training staff, but also implementing all the forms in place, they reported to us that it really would not make a difference for them at this point. So, and they also confirmed that they are able to provide the reporting that we need on time, which is coming up here in the next few weeks. So, kind of like, that was our decision-making progress and reasoning behind going with this option.
A little bit of follow-up. So, in the event that we decide that we don't want to move the $150,000 to general fund in the next agenda bill, it's very difficult because these are kind of two discrete decisions, is Imagine Housing in a position where they could step up and do the administrative requirements to meet the ARPA and be ARPA compliant?
We would need to explore that with them. We did not explore it, Council Member Ray, and they would need to, yeah, the timing would be an issue. So we would need to explore that with Imagine Housing.
These are great questions, Council Member Ray, and these are very entwined decisions that you'll be making. So if the council is in agreement, we could have Robert go through his presentation as well, so that you can have all of this before you vote on the first one.
I would like to have that because I think that it's hard to make this decision without that one or make that one and then kind of blow this one up.
Yeah, I wouldn't want you to blow it up. And a second point is, I might want to invite Imagine Housing to come back because of the difference in the way the money is going out to tenants versus the way the money would be going out to a landlord with tenants, and that may be a part of what is going on here as well. So, Robert, if you would like to, why don't we go through the second agenda bill as well? And then we can just kind of combine the questions after that.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Just to summarize what's in your agenda packets, per the previous discussion on the previous agenda bill, administration is asking for a change in the allocation to general fund of $150,000 for Imagine Housing, as we discussed. The other item that we are shifting from ARPA funds to the general fund would be $300,000 for the Small Business Flex Fund. And again, in both of these cases, it's to make sure that the money is getting to the people that are needed in terms of reporting requirements. We've been working with the Small Business Flex Fund for several months. Kudos to Benton in the Economic Development Department. He's been working very, very hard on this. But at the end of the day, working with our legal counsel, City Attorney at Madrona Law, David Lyman, we were having several meetings with the National Development Council, which oversees the Flex Fund. And what gets a little technical is terms of the final rule is the fact that there is a lot of monitoring of subrecipients. So if we grant to one agency, and for example, to the Flex Fund, they use other banks and other nonprofit subsidiaries to loan, we would need all of them to report at some level, and we would need to be able to monitor on our end every single level that they're dealing. And that's where it got a bit complicated for granting the funds to these agencies. And when you have an agency like Imagine Housing that's much smaller than a HopeLink per se, and they're looking for an immediate need, that's where the resources are difficult. With Flex Fund, this is different than what happened with the CARES Act funding because the state is actually not granting to the Flex Fund. And so, in the third round of CARES Act, if you recall, the state actually stepped in and assisted those businesses directly. That's not the case this time. So with the Flex Fund, we would enter in that partnership, which we have with them, but in terms of the subrecipients and the terms of what is pure COVID assistance, can we demonstrate that every single dime used by the businesses for COVID relief? That's where the auditing gets very complicated on the ARPA reporting end. It would be, you know, harder to monitor, harder to track. We'd need extra resources to do it. It's much simpler to use the general fund approach for that Flex Fund to, one, make sure we don't get in trouble with the auditors, of course, make sure we're in compliance with how we're spending our ARPA funds, but to having at least the leeway to still grant those funds to those agencies. And remember, in both cases, the city is still receiving $10 million directly to offset general fund losses during COVID. So there's $10 million that the, approximately $11 million the city will receive that goes directly to the city to offset those losses. This is a new option that also happened with the final rule, where it's almost like a standard deduction. With those $10 million, the reporting requirements are less, meaning we have leeway to use general fund for more purposes. We talked about capital, we talked about these grant programs from the $10 million. That's kind of the general purpose to offset those revenue losses that we receive. The remaining $1 million, that's where there is more reporting requirements attached to that. We believe, again, that HopeLink can meet those requirements. But we talked about, there's a difference between granting funding to a landlord versus granting funding to a tenant, as we met, as we discussed a little bit before tonight. And that's where we believe that, you know, HopeLink does have the ability to do that. They have the ability to have that subrecipient monitoring. They're doing it for multiple other cities. They have the resources to do so, and the timeframe, we believe, they can meet those requirements. But like I said, there's more hoops to jump through, so to speak, when receiving those ARPA funds directly rather than the offset we have with the general fund, where it's a standard deduction. I hope that makes sense.
Council Member Ray, and would you like Imagine Housing, Sean, to address your question as well about why their organization is so challenged to meet ARPA? Or do you think you have all the information?
No, I think I've got it, and that was really, really, really helpful. And I have just some follow-up questions, but I'll sit back for a bit.
And we haven't had a motion yet, so we are in sort of question mode right now. So questions on either of those would be great. And if we don't have, oh, you can go ahead with questions, and then we'll go to Council Members Act and Council President, Deputy Council President, all, Councilmember Act and Council President. So go ahead, Councilmember Ray.
So I'm trying to understand the standard deduction approach to ARPA funding. So I'm trying to understand the standard deduction approach to ARPA funding and the kind of the refilling of the general fund compensate for general fund losses during the pandemic. So this is going to go into our general fund as $9 million of excess fund balance? Is that, is that a fair statement or is it restricted? Or what's the thinking on how it hits general fund balance?
So again, we do receive two different tranches of money. We've received half, approximately half of those funds last year. We're expected to receive the other half this year. With the requirements, of course, where we have to spend, the city has to spend this money, or at least program this money by 2024. Now, they have to spend the money. So one of the prohibited items is just replenishing the fund balance and not using it. Still has to be money that's spent. So either way, with the standard deduction, we're gonna have to identify where it was spent, whether it be on capital, whether it be programming for outside grants, like we were talking about tonight. But it will have to be demonstrated by 2024 that it's programmed to be spent.
But it won't have the same reporting requirements as that last million dollars that you rely, kind of, so. So we are, in some ways, using the general fund as a pass-through, and maybe I'm oversimplifying this, and the fungibility of the dollars, and it's a good day when you get to use fungibility in a sentence. But the fungibility of the dollars, we really can't, I mean, it's, it's the same, there's, it's a difference without a distinction.
Right.
That is correct, Councilmember Ak.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're good? Okay, let's go to Council President.
I guess my question is the Small Business Flex Fund of 300,000. Can you give me a sense how much of that need has been identified? You know, has any of that money been spent or has there, yeah, where is that? What's the status?
We have not spent the money to this point. Benton Koblenz is on the line, and he can talk a little bit more because he's been working with the Flex Fund now for several months.
Yeah, thank you, Robert. Yeah, so we have not made our investment yet into the Flex Fund. I think that's.
Benton, this is Tisha. Can you try speaking up a little bit? We'll also try and increase our volume in here, but it's a little hard to hear you.
Can you not hear me? I will try to speak up.
Thank you.
But can you hear me? Okay, okay, cool. So yeah, the first thing is we have not spent, we have not made an investment into the Flex Fund yet. And so we haven't spent any dollars. The Flex Fund has identified by requesting applications over a million dollars worth of possible loans that could be given out through other private lenders. They've been able to fulfill by about $500,000 worth of loan applications here in the city of Issaquah. So just right now, in unprocessed loan applications, there's still $500,000 that remains. And we think that once we make this investment, the Flex Fund, in partnership with our city communications, will work to, you know, get the word out to more businesses in order to, you know, elevate the need in our community. And so we, we think there's well over $500,000 worth of needs still out there. And so this investment would be quite timely and well utilized by the community.
Any other questions? And if not, anyone care to make a motion? Which motion?
I'll double-check with Councilmember Ray since he, his question seemed to cross over into both. I would suggest the rental assistance program.
I would take him in order.
Take him in order? Okay.
And motion? Yep. I would move to authorize modification to the Issaquah Rental Assistance Program created in October 2021 as follows. One, lift the three-month limit on rental assistance provided through this program to include all rental arrears. And two, redistribute the original allocation of $500,000 in rental assistance to include $350,000 to HopeLink, amend the existing contract, and up to $150,000 to Imagine Housing to enter into a new contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there council discussion?
I guess first, I just want to thank city staff and HopeLink staff and Imagine Housing staff for coming together to problem solve here. Really appreciate your work on this. I'll be brief. This update seems to meet the needs of HopeLink by acknowledging the administrative burdens they brought to our attention, meets the needs of the city by ensuring rental assistance is both timely and effective, and it meets the needs of our residents struggling to catch up on overdue rent and to get that fresh start that was described in our memo. For all those reasons, I'll be supporting this motion tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council President?
Thank you. I really appreciate the city staff in hearing the need and just being nimble to respond to this need. I will note that I have some concerns that the urgency of this need is coming to us so late and that that makes this a more urgent, difficult situation that cannot be addressed as well through the method that we had decided, which was the HopeLink situation. And so I would ask from all involved, including the landlords and, you know, city staff and everyone, that we just have a little bit of better communication with our partners about what the need is so that we can potentially help before the situation becomes dire. So I will support this. I have a little bit of hesitancy for those reasons. And I just ask that this becomes a moment when our partners can come closer together with us and help us, help residents, so that people don't have to go through this trauma in such an extended period of time. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Just really mostly an ask, as we move forward with this, and I think it's the right thing to do, and I think it was some creative problem solving, but since we are gonna be lifting the three-month cap, I would like to get some feedback from the administration as we start to draw down on those funds, so we have a better sense of where we sit since we're really expanding the scope of this program. So if we could provide that kind of on an ongoing basis and we know when this program kind of sunsets, that would be very helpful for me.
That's a great comment. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote that was moved and seconded to authorize the modification to the Issaquah Rental Assistance Program, created in October 2021 as follows, to lift the three-month limit on rental assistance provided through the program and include all rental arrears, and redistribute the original allocation of $500,000 in rental assistance to include $350,000 to HopeLink and up to $150,000 to Imagine Housing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? That passes unanimously. Monica and all of our presenters tonight, I want to thank you for providing all this information. It is fantastic for our council and our community to hear the number of people you are helping in Issaquah. Hearing data really, really fleshes out the story for us. And also, the ability to be flexible and pivot is needed. I remember when Monica was asked if she knew $500,000 was the right number, and she said, no, I don't know that it's the right number. So now we're finding out how close to the mark we are, but how we may have had to make some changes in order to get that money into the hands of people that really needed it. So these are strange times and I appreciate all that you are doing and really look forward to Councilmember Ray's request about finding out where we are when it's all provided, where we've landed. So that is great. Thank you. Robert, did you have anything you wanted to present more on A B 8344, the reallocation second bill?
Not at this time unless there's any further questions.
Okay, we'll look for questions on the second bill. Any questions on the second bill, A B 8344? There's no questions, but someone care to make a motion? Council President?
Thank you. I would like to move to reauthorize the remaining 2021 funds of $300,000 for a city contribution to the state Small Business Flex Fund and $500,000 for a rent relief program to the 2022 budget, and reallocate the $450,000 of funding for these two programs from the American Rescue Plan Act funds to the undesignated general fund, fund balance, and direct the chief financial officer to incorporate these changes in a subsequent 2022 budget amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional council discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Robert. Thanks for the good information tonight and the good explanations. That was really helpful. The next item on the agenda this evening is good of the order. And has anybody, oh, we've got a couple of things. Let's start with Council President and Deputy Council President.
Thank you. So for good in the order, I know in the consent agenda earlier, we had approved the creation of the Council Rules of Procedure Ad Hoc Committee. And so I just wanted to name the three members who were interested in serving on that committee, and that will be Councilmember Martz, Councilmember Ray, and Councilmember Hunt. And so we appreciate the team trio. And so the group, I guess, will coordinate with the administration and I'm not quite sure when they are expected to pull back a recommendation or the next point, but I know there was a pretty quick turnaround. So chop, chop, get up to work. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. A couple of things I just wanted to say now that we're back in council chambers. I was, personally, I was sworn in a little over two years ago on January 6th, 2020. And I sat here in this chamber where Councilmember Joe sits right now for only nine city council meetings before our March 10th, 2020 study session was canceled due to something called COVID-19. And then our first virtual meeting, then over Skype, do you remember, meeting over Skype? Was on March 16th, 2020. And I did a little digging through the archives to find those dates. Since then, we've only met a couple of times in person. And all this to say that, you know, including now, really only sat up here 10 times since my oath of office. So I wanted to share this for two reasons. First and foremost, I want to thank our dedicated city staff for the tremendous amount of work they put in to meet the needs of the Open Public Meetings Act, to meet the needs of our safety and our health, and to meet the needs of an engaged city council and community. I think I speak for everyone when I say there truly is not enough gratitude in the world to properly honor your commitment to those needs and to this institution. So really quickly, I want to say thank you to Tina, Tisha, and Chris with the Clerk's Office. Thank you to Tim, Wes, Olin, and Travis with ICTV. Thank you to John, Gus, and Tim with IT. Thank you to Autumn and Thomas with Communications Department. And thank you, of course, to Wally and Andrea with the administration. And thank you to many, many others I'm sure I've missed. We really, really appreciate you. Then I'll get a little sappy. Second, I think that this day marks the end of a chapter, or at least marks us approaching the end of a chapter. Chapter full of challenge, concern, tough decisions and tough odds of opportunity, of lessons learned. Working up here with you all, whether it be virtual or in person, is easily one of the best things I get to do with hours in my day. Sure, I'll miss seeing your cats prominently march in the front of your cameras during meetings. I'll miss waiting for Mayor Pauli to unmute herself. But I'm also looking forward to many, many more fascinating conversations, insightful viewpoints, passionate community advocates, civil disagreements, that compelling point you hadn't thought about yet. And I'm looking forward to doing it all in person. So here's to that.
That was awesome. Thank you. Just a couple of things to add on to that. We're never allowed to use the word unprecedented again in anything because it couldn't possibly ever be as unprecedented as what we went through. And also, just a thank you to the community and to the council. We now have new hybrid meeting formats. You've shown a lot of flexibility. The community's shown a lot of resiliency. And I doubt council members coming on in the next new round will have to go through what you all went through, who got elected two years ago. So things are looking up. Thank you for that. And there are some upcoming council meetings. March 15th, there's a city council study session with potential agenda items, including the Capital Finance Community Test Force Recommendations Report, and the March 21st regular council meeting with potential agenda items, including the first 2022 budget amendment, 2021, 2022 budget reauthorizations, and property acquisitions. There's no executive session this evening, and so our first meeting back together is adjourned at 9:46. Have a good night. Oops, I get to do this.